All right, it is seven o'clock on November the 28th. I am going to call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Clerk Coatsen, would you do roll call for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Mr. Henshaw.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
He's running away.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Present.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Police Chief David Burks.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hotson here.
And we will rise to Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we will move on to review of the agenda. Clerk Coatsen, if you would go over the business items?
Will do. I'll start with our teen town hall takeover presentation. We'll have that. We'll then do old business annexation for discussion. Then we enter into new business. We have A, Resolution 2023-20, legal contract approval, board vote. B, Resolution 2023-21, vision action plan, board vote. And then we'll do administrative updates.
Are there any changes, additions to the agenda? Or none? We will move on to the closed session summary for November 14th. So, on November 14th, 2023, at 7:58 PM, a closed session was held at town hall. It was closed under general provisions Article 3-305b1 to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individual. And 14, before a contract or award is awarded or bids are opened to discuss a matter directly related to negotiating strategy or the content of a bid proposal, if public discussions or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in a competitive bidding or proposal process. The Board of Commissioners went into closed session. It was, the motion was made by Commissioner Lot and seconded by Commissioner Colbert. All five commissioners were present, and all were unanimous to go into closed session. In closed session also was Town Clerk John Hotson for the town attorney RFP discussion. Oh, topics, what does it say? Topics discussed: Town Attorney's RFP and Town Administrator. Now we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? Before we vote, I'm just going to take a moment to explain to our teens what we're doing, if that's okay? So, a consent agenda is a list of basic items that don't necessarily require discussion. And instead of voting on each one individually, we can save time and allow the public more time to comment by just kind of approving them as one. And what we're approving here: meeting minutes, financial reports, reports from, and reports from the different departments. Thank you.
All right. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Mr. Henshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Sawyer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Now we will move on to reports. We have Arts Council first. I have not heard from Arts Council. I know our events coordinator's been trying to reach out, but I haven't heard from them. Have you heard from them?
I have not.
So, we'll keep working on getting, getting them regrouped for the new year. Cert, Chief Burks, do you have a report from Cert?
So, yeah, so for the month of October, Cert actually participated in our base and new shredded event, and they also participated in the trunk or treat event that we had here at the town. So, those are the two things that they did in October.
Thank you. So, move on to Economic Development Work Group. Commissioner Colbert?
Sure. We held our second meeting in the month we discussed. Information application for renewal of that. Continuing those discussions and also waiting for the feedback.
We will move on to the Events Committee. Are you, I know you're just talking.
It's okay. Well, you know, we have our Christmas event coming up. We have about, we have some vendors that will be there and some food, some food vendors and some vendors selling some crafts. We also have the Town of Away's, right?
Yes.
The ornaments with the town's new logo. And we will have hot chocolate, caroling, and tree lighting as normal.
Residents in the room, did you receive a postcard?
I did.
In mail telling you you could get a free, okay. So, you bring that, so we.
Not what, what?
Yes. Commissioner Lot, no, Commissioner Lot mentioned that they, we got some ornaments that are very nice.
That are very nice. Very, very.
Okay, yes. Sorry, that's it, sorry. All right, we'll move on to Green Team, which, you know, it's winter.
We haven't had anything going on since the farmer's market. I know you know more about having a meeting for organization.
We're trying to meet with pastors, stay in at Providence St. John Baptist Church, along with a lot of his leadership ministry because their, the garden is housed at Providence St. John's in its coordination with the town. And so, they have to provide us a person from the church who is, you know, responsible for the facility and that kind of thing while we're there and their person has left. So, we have to meet to get that ready for next year. Green Wolf Consulting, they are continuing to work with our elected officials and start tracking what legislation has been refiled that would impact us. They are working on, you know, a big ask this year is for money from the state to assist with the school lane, Wilson Lane project because of the store marketing management elements. It's a very expensive project. That's an update with them, and they'll be, hopefully, we'll be meeting with the legislators, probably in Annapolis this year during session a few times. For all of that. Historical Committee, they, I believe they're just at the informal meeting stages. They had their quarterly meeting, and they are definitely looking for more folks to be engaged in writing about history. They're actually also hoping to get young people engaged in history. That's something that is their main focus. That's where they're at. And we'll move into Commissioner Reports. November is kind of light month with the holiday, but I've been attending PG CMA's legislative meetings to talk about what we as all 27 municipalities in Prince George's County are going to ask for together. I attended Washington, the Washington International Horse Show's reception, able to welcome several ambassadors to the town of Upper Marlboro at that, which is very nice. I've been attending some economic development meetings with the county Economic Development Group. And did a very nice ecumenical service at Trinity Church. We have eight churches in the town of Upper Marlboro. And not just the churches in the town, but around the town, they come together to form the Marlboro Churches Food Bank. There are nine of them that form the Marlboro Churches Food Bank, and they provide food to, I think they fit 65 families once a month. And they will be, there's a bin outside for food drive. They are going to be doing some other drives, so keep an eye out for that, how we can support our community. Not every person is a resident, but we're trying to work with the churches to support the community. Hand it over to Commissioner Colbert.
The same light month for November, but in addition to the Economic Development Work Group meeting, I also attended Marlboro Town's quarterly HOA meeting end of October and was able to attend and participate in the town Veterans Day Breakfast, where we were able to honor a number of veterans in the town, including Commissioner Lot.
This is my last town meeting, so I'm going to give my farewell speech, I suppose. I just want to thank the town residents of Upper Marlboro and those who voted for me. Much appreciated. I'm proud to have worked with this board these last two years and getting to know yourselves and the residents alike. Thank you to Mayor Franklin for introducing me to local politics and also making it enjoyable for myself and fellow town employees. Thank you.
Like they said, it's a light schedule for November, but I too participated in the Veterans Breakfast, and I was honored and I was very thankful. We had about 10 people come out and, and, you know, enjoy breakfast with us, and we were able to fellowship. So, it was really nice. We have an upcoming reception, December 7th, which I will be attending.
PG CMA.
PG CMA reception, welcome reception, December 7th, and that's our last.
I attended the November PG CMA meeting. I too would like to thank everyone that voted for me, even though I did not gain a seat on the board. I have served this town for approximately eight years, and will continue to do so even as I'm not on the board. I will continue to be involved with the town and its residents. I will also be attending the legislative meet and greet on 7th of December.
We will move on to our teen town hall takeover presentation. So, for the public, we invited our resident teenagers to come into town hall, meet with our department heads, meet with our town clerk, and learn about what it's like to be part of municipal government. And then we also did, because, because I'm a former town planner, we did a town planning exercise, and they came up with some cool ideas. So, I am going to give them the floor to present the ideas that they came up with. So, we, you guys want to come up and introduce yourselves together and come up to the podium and just say, say who you are, and then I think there's a slide. Do you have?
I don't have the slide.
You don't have the slide?
I don't.
Oh, okay. I did, but that's okay. I'll, I'll tell you, you try and remember what's on it. If you miss anything, I'll just, the two of you together can probably do it.
I, 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 or, is that, um, I, I think one of two of the most, uh, local, uh, the spot of having a, on Maiden Street, um, we, because we thought, there's, there's not a whole lot of, well, there's, there's not a chateau lane nearby, and it would bring in a lot of, which, um, 301, so, it's out of the, oh, worthwhile venture, um, and sidewalk as well.
Also helps with, get to it.
And, um, one of the other things we were talking about was, is the nearby Healy's has a uncomfortable entrance and exit that we thought could be improved. And, um, what?
There's not a lot of activity in here, we thought.
And the area of the, um.
I think that's everything. I think they did a, a good job being thoughtful. So, would you give them a round of applause? Thank you for taking over town. I will try to explain as we go through the rest of the meeting, which should be pretty.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So, I think they did a really nice job. I don't know if anyone else wants to comment on what they've shared with us.
I, I think so. I heard economic development, I heard pedestrian safety, I heard things about education, I heard recreation, I heard certification, I heard a lot of the things that we talk about in these meetings, pretty much every, all around, so.
You know, we're, we're looking at the action plan later today, but a lot of these been fit in there. And maybe MNC PBC will listen to our teenagers. All right. We will move into old business. We currently keeping this annexation tab on here in the event that an agreement comes in, because we have several out that we are waiting to come in. We do not have, we did not get any agreement in. So, this will be up at the next meeting, and hopefully, we will have some then. And just, we talked about this with, with the team, but the annexation that we're trying to do is going out towards 301, which would cover the weeds and allow us to have some impact on that area. Do you guys have any questions? Here, we can, we'll take public comment as well, because it's a business item. If you are online, just raise your hand, and we'll get to you. And if you're in the room, you can come up to the podium if you have.
Last question. Chair of the Global Homer Heights, is this what was previously called, uh, annexation part three? Has that changed, has that map changed at all, or is it still that same area?
The map has to change. We can't do the same annexation. The map is slightly different.
So, what has changed?
So, it is a slightly different area, and we will produce a map when it's ready to go out. Unfortunately, we, it's very close to what it was. Unfortunately, we have some landowners that have been around for a long time, and they are going and harassing people in the annexation area. So, we have to take some extra measures of security to consider people's home lives. It is unfortunate.
That's interesting, but can I hear?
We can, yeah. Can you guys?
I think so.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Don't know, okay. Don't know, doesn't matter.
Thank you.
We'll move on to new business. So, we will start with Resolution 2023-20, legal contract approval. This is a board vote. We had to, actually, Clerk Coatsen, do you want to read it in and give us the overview?
Okay. Resolution 2023-20, section regular town meeting, dated November 28th, 2023. A resolution, resolution of the Town Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro approving a 24-month contract for legal services with the town of Upper Marlboro. So, we went ahead and we released an RFP, which is a request for proposals from various law firms to find qualified lawyers to serve the town in the capacity of the town attorney. It was released for 15 days back from September 28th to November 7th, and we received two at the time, one from Kevin Best Law Firm, as well as the Van Ruff. And so, the Board of Commissioners this evening are going to make the decision as to which lawyer they would serve.
Just for the teens, when I was talking, when I was reading all that stuff, the boring stuff, right, that was, we had a closed session to talk about it so that we could talk about it in a way that didn't jeopardize our position. So, is there a motion with regard to the legal contract?
I have, I have a question. We asked for additional information.
And it was provided, you provided.
I know, yes, right now. I'm not certain that that would really be ethical. Based on our procurement ordinance, it needs to be fair. If you're going to ask for it from one, you should ask for it from the other. I mean, we accepted RFPs on face value, and they both gave us what they proposed. If we went back and asked one person to do something, we should be able to go back and ask the other person to do something as well.
So, I, and I am trying to be careful about what I say, see if what is closed session and what is open session. We, we could have, but the difference was, you know, I don't know. I mean, kind of the information from the other was where it was, was where we were comfortable with it. So, we asked the other where they would be at, at that.
In other words, what we just had is we, one was okay, and one we wanted to see a reduction.
Right. Well, there, I think we can say there was a substantial cost difference.
Right.
And so, we could have asked both of them to reduce their costs, but one of them was already very low, and I don't think we felt like.
They would have gone even lower.
Or that, that it was a factor, whether they went. I'm just going to ask Clerk Coatsen from a procedural, and you can say I don't have the answer to this, from a procedural perspective, do you think we should have asked both of them?
I think we should get more information, to be honest with you. That would be the best. But in my opinion.
Yeah.
I mean, I, the one was already lower.
Right.
To me, that's what I already see. One was already lower.
And, yeah, a fair increase over, I don't feel like asking that one to be lower is fair.
Right, because that's unfair to them, because they're already coming in very low.
And I don't think they would do.
I don't know, we.
I don't think that they would do that.
Well, I think they would do that.
Because they're not making money.
Also, the, the, we had, or, and not unanimously, but we had some concerns with each of them that were not related to the same item, same. One, you know, the, where we asked for, for more information was to become, to, to level the playing field a little bit based on how far apart some of the, the cost difference was.
Makes sense.
So, it would, it would not be the same ask for someone else to, to, to go even lower than what they've already been.
Not necessarily about whether we're asking them to go lower. What we are doing is we are asking someone to change their bid, which is already, you know, change what they offered us. And if we had a problem with the other individual firm, we didn't give them a chance to correct that problem, but we did give this firm a chance to correct their, their dollar value. Is that the same?
Big dollar value to dol, it's dollar value to dollar value. I think the.
They're comparing apples to apples. So, it's not the, it's not the same thing that we were asking of the other.
I guess the question becomes, do we want to ask the other firm if they will lower their cost and vote on this on December 11th, or if we want to move forward voting? There's a limit to how much we can discuss outside of closed session.
Right, right, which is, check to be, uh, careful, careful in my terms, like, don't think.
I don't think the price was so much, if I may.
Sure.
I don't think the price was so much the issue, but I understand what you're saying. If we asked one to make a correction here, we could have asked the other one to make a correction here, but we're not comparing the two same things.
But you are asking this person to bring their proposal up to something that we would, we would consider. You're not asking the other one, who may have a different issue, you haven't asked that person to correct that issue either. Right?
Which makes it. I see what you're saying, but it's, it's still two different.
They may be two different things, but if you're asking someone to.
So, let me just ask this. If you, if you, if we asked the other person to make a correction, right, and this, this correction, one was about pricing, the other one was about something else. So, we would have to give that other person actually, we would have to actually give them a time where we can see the change. We don't have that time, I don't think. Because it's not, because you write something down or you say you're going to do something, that doesn't mean you're going to do it, right? So, we have to, the performance. I think that's more.
See what you want, I'm just rather, I'm just bringing it up. I just think that, guy, ethically, you should be, you should be comparing equally. And if you're going to ask someone to change and, and accept that change, and then it just looks like, it doesn't look right to me.
Of mine, I have made that request. So, it would be a probably third request, based on what we're talking about.
Well, is it going to hurt if we ask, or is it going to make any, what, what do we, it's going to delay, but what do we, what can we put in place to make sure that the ask is done? What can we do?
I think.
If we do ask, what can we do to confirm it's going to be done?
I think the other thing that we're running up against here, too, in terms of the timing, is when current contracts expires, and are we getting to a point where we're, we'd be not, not in coverage with a lawyer?
No, but what we're, we're, we're running into an ethical question, truly, because price is price, right? You can ask people to reduce their price, and it's sort of objective. If you have a conversation that is performance-based, that's not, you're no longer asking for something subjective, and it starts to, in my opinion, starts to be a moral question or an ethical question all over, and makes everything very knotty. I think price is price, and it's objective, and if anything, we could go to the other person and ask them to, if they're going to lower their price, because that's purely a budget aspect. But I don't think, um, having other discussions is appropriate. having other discussions is appropriate with regards to an RFP process. Because we're then having more substantive discussions?
So, so again, just to be clear, so you can go back and say, hey, since I asked this vendor to, to change their pricing, can you see what you can offer us?
And pricing change.
And pricing change.
That's the only, that's the only thing I think we can do. Because you're going to, ethically, if you're going to ask people, you've got to ask them the same thing, like the bids are in. We definitely asked, we've negotiated price before with vendors and for this same reason, in fact. Thinking of your last one, darn it.
I'll just say, based on the information that I, that I have, that we've received, I'm comfortable taking a vote tonight. But if the rest of the board feels that they're merit to going back and asking another set of questions, then that, that's uncomfortable if we put this to a vote tonight.
I'm more comfortable if we vote on it and if we go back with another set of questions.
We can do choose and go either way.
For yourself.
A vote.
Okay.
We've already gone back and forth to them a couple things, so it is what it is.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask if there's a motion with regard to.
One of these firms, obviously, we have, we've been doing business with and is in the middle of a, an issue with courts. How are we going, is that person going to be allowed to go forward?
So we're starting to get into interesting territory. Both of, just so the public is aware, both of these firms are currently employed with us. And both of them are engaged in processes at the current time. So I, we can't really get into like legal discussions right now. But whatever comes will be worked out. If it happens. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty, twenty-three dash twenty?
So moved.
Well, hold on.
I am, I am so moved with awarding the contract to the Van Ruff.
There's a second. Clerk Coateson.
President Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Culver.
Aye.
Mr. Hanchett.
Aye.
Mr. Lot.
Aye.
Mr. Pennoir.
No.
Thank you.
I do have a resident comment.
Oh, we voted, okay. Let's take, let's take the comment and if we have to, can we rescind the vote if we have to? Yeah.
Hi, this is Patty. I've worked in contracts and RFPs for quite a few years. And the RFP is the RFP. It's a request for proposal. People submit what they are, are going to do. If there, that should be what you look at when you're looking at a proposal. If you're going to go back, you have to have a second round and submit it to both contracts. Otherwise, the other contractor could have the right to, and we've seen this in our company as well, where you end up having to split that RFP between two. So it, it can get really ugly if you've asked one without the other and didn't go through a second RFP cycle. So.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I don't want to take your time if you're not done.
No, you, you apparently are, you're, you're, that's could, fine.
Well, I wasn't trying to interrupt your three minutes. I just thought you were done. All right, we will take, and we'll rescind the vote if we need to, or we'll discuss.
Judge Roberts, I was going to say a similar thing. My experience has been that if none of them are acceptable initially, you put out a second RFP and clarify, you know, what are some of the reasons that they were not accepted? Often there's a, like, comment back to them at that point of like everyone who proposed of like, these are the issues that we saw with your RFP. And then you have a second round and give everyone a chance to propose a second time. Because otherwise you open the town to liability and possibly dispute over that.
Okay, so should we rescind the vote and then vote it again? Because, yeah, so I think we should because we didn't take the comment first. So. Do we have to vote to rescind?
I think you should.
Yeah. Does there a motion to rescind the vote but not the motion, correct?
Take, take it all off.
Take, okay. Does there a motion to rescind the last activity? So moved. Is there a second? Aye.
Mr. Culver. Mr. Hanchett.
Aye.
Mr. Lot.
Aye.
Mr. Pennoir.
No.
I'm not sure what happened there. I think we rescinded. Then we're just going to go forward and vote on it again now that we've had the, the public comment. So is there any more discussion after the public comment?
One thing I'll say, and I understand the comments about the contracting process. Both of these are current vendors of the town. And when you have, when you have companies who are vendors of an entity, you are also able to take into consideration in your bid process, previous performance. And that's something that is a, that is bid into a proposal.
Right.
But it is something that can be considered when you have that historical data. Which is why, like I said, I'm comfortable, me, taking the vote, moving forward with the vote.
I still think we should have the vote just process-wise. I didn't hear comments, so that's why I wanted to. Do you mind making your motion again?
I think that we move forward, Resolution twenty-three twenty, awarding the contract for services to the Van Ruff.
Is there a second? Vote for it again.
President Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Culver.
Aye.
Mr. Hanchett.
Aye.
Mr. Lot.
Aye.
Mr. Pennoir.
No.
Motion carried.
All right. We will move on to Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-one, which is our vision action plan. Our team will be interested in this, but I'm going to ask Clerk Coateson to read it into the record.
Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-one, inspection regular town meeting date, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners with the County of Upper Marlboro to approve the County of Upper Marlboro Vision Action Plan. Both the House of Town residents in which and Better City LLC.
So this is an action plan developed by our economic development firm after, it, it's to implement a vision plan that the residents participated in, we have about sixty residents participate in kind of what we did this afternoon about what we'd like to see in the town. And a lot of it is very similar to everything that teams shared with us. And this sort of lays out actions that staff would need to take, what timeline, and it directs staff a little bit and where to look for grant, those grant funds we talked about as to how. Is there any discussion on the board? So shall we take public comments?
I have one question.
Yeah.
There is a time. So all of these things that we were trying to do, we need to get grants for.
All right, so the timeline is kind of a suggestion. I think that's forecasting.
Right.
But this allows us, when we ask for a grant, to say, hey, this is our plan. We have a plan. And here, and we can start putting together estimates for funding it. And, you know, when you're applying for a grant, they want to see a plan. When you're asking the state or the county for money, they want to see that you have a plan.
Forecast because it helps.
Right, yes, it's not, we don't have to stick to this. Yeah.
Judge Roberts, Judge Roberts, I know that you had the library upgrade there and trying to do that in early twenty-twenty-four. I don't know if this is significant, but number one is Hiram LaRue is still on the Board of Trustees. I don't know if he is or not. He used to be the Vice President of the Upper Marlboro Friends of the Library. But I also believe they do not have a current CEO. They've been searching for one for like the last year or so. What they are planning on doing. And the library is, Upper Marlboro is currently considered to be a small library. In the last round, they added South Bowie, which is the large library that we now fall under. So I don't know if they have any plans, but they've actually been taking shelf space away from Upper Marlboro.
Can we change the old high school project to the old Marlboro Elementary owned? Which is what everybody refers to it as.
Sure. Are there any hands online?
I do not have anyone.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-one Vision Action Plan while with the modification that all references to old high school project will be changed to Old Marlboro Elementary School project within the documents? So there's a second.
Will do. Judge Roberts.
Aye.
Mr. Culver.
Aye.
Mr. Hanchett.
Aye.
Mr. Lot.
Aye.
Mr. Pennoir.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
So we'll move on to administrative updates. Two things. One is the Stone House purchase, we, which, Stone House is, as you're coming down Oak Green Highway, the road splits. There's this little building that used to be the telegraph office, right there at the split of Church Street and seven-twenty-five. So the county is willing to sell that to us. And they now need us to sign a contract that allows us to enter it and look at it. So Public Works can go in and look at it. They can determine if we need to get someone out to do a building inspection and estimate cost for upgrades. And it's a contract that I have to sign. And our attorney advised that the board needs to approve it before I can sign it. So I'm not telling you guys that it exists and it will come before us on the eleventh. And that's where we're at. And that, once that's signed and approved by the county, Director Bond will take a look and advise us on whether we need to get someone else in or who, you know, work on who we need to get in to look at it.
Do we decide what we're going to do with it? Because there were several ideas thrown out. Think that we decide what we're doing.
Yeah, so we sent them a letter talking about using it as, as a.
The welcome center?
Welcome slash, welcome center slash museum slash entrepreneurs, to kind of put them all in there, shove them all in the plan for what we would like to do with it. And, and we just talked about putting the bike weigh station outside before work was done in the building. That can be, there's actually a lot of grant funding for those. Probably be done without doing.
How much are they going to sell it to?
So that is not something that, this is just like, hey, you're interested in this house? You can get a building inspector and come check it out and see what it's going to cost and then.
The last offer was a dollar.
Right, so I don't know if it's a dollar or what it is, but I think the finding out, and we will take public comment after we get through administrative by then. So we'll, so this is just, I'm just telling you guys where we're at with the process and that we will have to approve me signing this contract that says Public Works agrees not to damage anything when they go in there. So. So Church Street parking update. I received the agreement back from Reverend Peter today with changes. So that will be submitted out to y'all. I suggested he had a good timeline. Would be for it to be looked at and approved in January and that we would send it to legal in the meantime. If that sounds okay with everyone. So that's, that and administrative. Do we have anything else that, Chief Burke, you have something?
So I just wanted to let the public know that in case anybody had any questions about the election day, parking lot situation where we had our officers out in the parking lot talking to a young lady that was in the parking lot. They were out there for two and a half hours with this young lady who was having a severe mental health crisis. So if anybody had any questions, I just wanted them to know that's what it was in reference to. The challenge with this is that the young lady was having a severe mental health crisis at the time that the officer encountered her. So had she come in the building during the election, that would have been a significant problem because she actually went to the front door, rang the doorbell, and our receptionist noticed something was wrong and called the police that came out immediately. Fortunately, one was coming in the parking lot and she was standing at the door. So we were able to get her calmed down. We actually had to call the county to come assist us with her because she's been doing this, she's been in this process for several years. So I just want the board to see, this is what the young lady had on her at the time that we encountered her.
Those election nights?
This is the election day.
Oh, day.
So the community can see that this is an eleven, I'm sorry, a nine-inch mite that this lady had on her in a serious mental health crisis. So had she come in here, this could have been very problematic. So I wanted to commend the officers that work here and let you all know that I'm sure a lot of people saw because they were out there for two and a half hours with this lady to help her calm down. And she's already under medication and counseling. She just didn't take her medication. So in case anybody wanted to know, that's what was going on. And that our officers did a phenomenal job giving this weapon from this lady and not having any issues like you may see on the TV across the country. So we do employ reputable, credible, talented officers.
Good job, yeah. Good job, Upper Marlboro Police Department. We as board may want to discuss moving our polling location away from what is essentially the town hall and the police station. A note for public safety. So we can deal with that in the coming year. Director Bond, did you have anything?
Where are we with connotation?
So we have to get through the property standards ordinance, which is struggling with our attorney at the moment. So before we, you have the other slide at the very end, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so before we go to public comment, I just want, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Hanchett and Commissioner Pennoir for their service. I am sorry that you won't be serving with us and it was a pleasure. So, thank you.
One question I did have, I wanted to circle back to the Stone House contract since we're not expending funds on that. Is the reason that we have to hold on to that board because of sustainability? I know you said to make sure, you know, Director Bond doesn't go down there and break any more windows, but what's, what's the reasoning behind? Just from my clarification, my education.
So I asked this question of our attorney today. Right. So I asked this question of our attorney today. I have an extensive email back, but it's just saying it has potential monetary liability impact in prior indemnification by the town. The license is a type of contract. There's no express authority for any single municipality to enter into a license agreement. The principal, I can send this to you, but it seems like he's saying because I don't have the express authority to sign it that I shouldn't, but I'm just not sure because there's lots of other things that I sign without the express authority. And I did ask that question because we're not spending any money. But we can, this, this came through right before I started team town hall. So we can look at it more, and if we don't need to vote on it, then we can not vote. And I asked you if you had anything. So we'll move on to public comment.
The general public comment. So regarding the stone building, your plan, you mentioned possibly placing bike racks there or something of that sort. You may want to hold off on that because there is limited amount of space for the contractor to work. And if they need a dumpster and their vehicles and everything else, they're only gonna, you know, they don't have so much space. Officer, remind people we're doing work game night again tomorrow night, six tonight at eight o'clock. So if anyone would like to drop by, we'll be here and have drinks. Thank you. Thank you, you both. Well, thank you all of you for your service for the last two weeks.
Do we have any online?
Oh, I just had an answer. I have any. Patty?
Hi, yes, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Hansett and Commissioner Knoyer for their service. And I'm looking forward to the new commission. Also, I wanted to talk about the stone building. Do we have a specific idea of what they're gonna put there? Is there, I mean, is there a way that that can be discussed? I know at one point in time, they had said that they were gonna use it as such a, like a visitor center and that the Historical Society, PG County Historical Society, had said that they would help man the visitor center. And I, at this point, we just have a stone building, and it doesn't look like we have a use for it.
So we just, I think we just finished the work session, and we, that topic came up. And so getting it transferred over to the town is where we get the ability to decide what goes in it.
I, oh, okay, so I thought it was a done deal that it was getting transferred over to us.
Well, we're gonna go in and, and look at it, right? If we go in and we send our contractor in and they say, uh, this building would cost $3 million to upgrade. We're, you know, we don't have that money to upgrade it, right?
Cost feasibility.
Yeah, so we just need to know, just like before you buy your house, you have a building inspector come in. That's what part of the process we're in is.
If you're getting your can of worms.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing, there was a list of projects that were sitting on the background that Kyle used to hit through. And I was wondering if you can tell us where some of the, what the statuses of some of those are, like the trails, the water park. I, I sent him a bunch of pictures of the, the blockages from the pallets that were still out there. And where is that at this point?
So page nine of the packet has the major projects underway update. I don't really know about the pallets. I will have to look into his past emails to figure out what's going on with that.
All right, well, there's, there's still a significant amount of pallets still out there. And it was my understanding that they were gonna be charging them a significant amount of money as long as those pallets remained in the river. So you might want to be clicking on how much time it's been since they haven't removed those pallets since that flood. Because that would be significant income for the town.
I don't think the town was charging money.
No, that, that's not.
Yeah, it was never the town charging.
No, but I mean, if they actually were charging them, they've been ignoring it, and somebody's gonna make some money off of that. So if, if you have a contact to push that, that might be a good place to look to get those pallets out. Because there's significant blockage on the Western Branch.
So we're past a three minutes, but I have put a note to check Kyle's email regarding the pallets.
Thank you.
Look into that. He already came up. Wait, they get one path at the comment.
Patty, can you hear us? Patty, can you hear us? Oh, wait, that's not me.
Um. It was off for a while, thank you.
Yes, yes, I couldn't hear anything for about the last two or three minutes.
Miss Jennifer's comment. Somehow Jennifer's comment was thanks to commissioners and teams and questions about the Marlboro Town Ruth Agreement. All right. All right. Without any other public comment, we will move on to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. This is probably gonna have to change. But just so everyone is aware. Oh, we, yes, we do have to, okay. So this is, on December 11th at seven.
Eight o'clock.
Well, seven thirty.
Saturday is the swearing in.
Seven thirty is the swearing in of the new Board of Commissioners. After we're sworn in at eight o'clock, we will go into closed session to determine the president and the treasurer. Then we will come back out and hold a public meeting. So if you want to come for the swearing in and just hang out and chat while we are in closed session, we'll come back out and have a meeting. And so this is the business agenda for that meeting. Corkosen, do you want to?
Will do. Business, A, selection of new president, mayor, Board of Town Commissioners, Board vote. B, selection of new town treasurer, Board vote. C, Resolution 2023-22, check signing, Board vote. D, Pepco presentation by Danielle Texera, Senior External Affairs Specialist and Team, and E, Annexation.
Just so everyone's aware, Daniel Texera reached out to Corkosen and I asking to do a presentation at that meeting. There is apparently some work that's gonna be going on, so it will be of interest to see what they, they haven't exactly told us. So we may have to add some of these agreements onto there, but is everyone okay with that? We'll keep it as tight as possible since it won't be starting till like 8:30. All right. Good. So lastly, tree lighting and Christmas Town Market. As Commissioner Lot said earlier, this Saturday, from 1:00 to 5:00, the market is open. Santa will be arriving around 2:00 o'clock. We will start singing and just being jolly around 4:30 to light the tree towards the end of the event. If you are a resident of the Town of Upper Marlboro, which is a much smaller area than most people realize, you should have gotten a card that said to bring this to town, or to the town tent for a free gift. We have some ornaments this year for town residents only. If you didn't get a card and you're a resident, just come and give us your address. We can check you off on the list there. Also, we have our decorating contest going on. So the way this works is if you are a resident of the Town of Upper Marlboro and you decorate your house for Christmas, the Board of Commissioners will drive around and we will pick our favorite house, our favorite three houses. And then you will get a sign in your yard and a prize for first, second, and third place. So all you have to do is decorate your house. We will find it and let you know. And this information went out in your constant contact. Do you need me to read it? Oh, so the, it says decorate by December 16th. So if your house is decorated by December 16th, you will be considered. Join us for swearing in at Board of Commissioners. Commissioners for 2023 through 2025 will be Derek Brooks, Charles Colbert, Sarah Franklin, Karen Lot, and Alma Privat. We would love for you to join us, and priority seating will be given to residents. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, go.
Don't move.
So, motion to adjourn is Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Lot seconded it, yeah?
Okay.
Got it backwards.
Lot, Colbert. Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Hansett.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Knoyer.
Aye.